All right. We will open the January 18th, 2022 Planning Board Meeting. Uh, this is being conducted via Zoom pursuant to the general laws. Uh, we are recording this and it will be posted online, but if anybody else is recording it, that is fine. You just need to let us know. Uh, is anybody recording?
Mike, would you make Jessica? Um, on the board, you're trying to be shorthanded.
Um, I will when we get to the, when we open up the public hearings, I'll designate her in the public hearings themselves. Um, but that's a good idea without Sutton. Um, all right. Let's see. So seven o'clock town planners report, John.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Okay, since the last meeting, um, I had the chance to speak with a Ms. Danette Peters regards to 103 and 105. That's Feeding Hills Road. So these are the properties across from Hudson Drive on Feeding Hills Road, um, just east of the town library. Those are interesting properties in that they are zoned. Um, I think it's R20 B perhaps, uh, you know, 300 feet of frontage, minimum two acres of pop. Um, and as it sits right now, we've got two single family residences on a single lot. Uh, so did a little bit of guidance and referred Ms. Peters to some local firms who might be able to help her. Uh, look at some of the hard numbers of survey and, um, and some of the likely variances that you have to get in place before we'd uh, be looking at an A and R. Uh, so we'll see how that shakes out. Uh, I spoke with, uh, St. Morton and Travis Barubi. These are two gentlemen doing some work on behalf of the new owners of the Sodom Mountain Campground. Uh, right now they're doing some fact finding, um, having existing conditions planned, uh, drawn up, but, uh, we researched what we had on file for, uh, plans of record for boundary information. And, um, as we discussed, I think over the summer, some of the permit, permitting, permitting history that we have on file, limited permitting history we have about for that site. Uh, but provided, uh, some guidance to them and will be tomorrow. Zuri Tahir, uh, Tahir, he is a gentleman who reached out to me about a month, month and a half ago. Um, about establishing a COVID test center, uh, here in town, uh, looking to share, uh, some operations, um, over at the Silk Road Motor Cars Facility on College Highway. He did drop off some preliminary information on to let the board know that, uh, see that I think I will be, uh, frankly circulating back and forth a couple of times, uh, to get this in a format that, um, will be considered complete in the, the plane board be comfortable, um, moving forward with. Uh, but we'll expect to see that in the, in the coming weeks. Uh, and lastly, I had a chance to speak with, or didn't, excuse me, not speak, correspond with Maxwell Austin. He's a high school student, um, who reached out, um, via the town website, uh, first to, um, uh, select board and then to me separately. He wanted to discuss, uh, well, I guess, uh, the possibility and the current approach towards the use of bike racks, um, and as a required site plan, uh, component, um, for new facilities looking to construct in town. Um, so I think what I'll end up doing is setting that as a discussion item for the next meeting. Um, but I will be speaking with him to our afternoon, uh, to get some, um, additional information and I'll pass it along to the board members. Now, if you'll tell me I wasn't muted this whole time, that'd be great. But laughter tells me everything to know.
Good.
All right. Thank you so much. And that's it for news, uh, for this cycle. Everything else tends to fall into the, uh, uh, the business and discussion as we have this week.
Okay. Um, 7:05.
I had one item here, uh, question, John. The COVID test center is Board of Health weighing in on, uh, the need for that or what's going on there?
That's a good question, uh, Mr. Phelps. Uh, what I have is very coarse, uh, very early in the process. Uh, it's described to me as uh, an opportunity to either get tested from your car, uh, you know, from your parking spot essentially, uh, or they might, not may, they indicate that they will have a, um, I feel room inside for you to, to receive people and process. But, uh, as I mentioned, it's very coarse at this point. I think we had, need to add some additional levels of detail. Um, and I'll certainly involve, uh, the Board of Health, uh, in, in the discussions as that advances.
Okay, um, 7:05 public comment. Anybody have anything for the board tonight that is, uh, not on the agenda? I see, just used a hand raise function, uh, if you could. Okay, um. All right. 7:10 is 159 Berkshire Ave. Continue public hearing for a stormwater management permit application.
Mr. Chair, this is John Goddard. I did receive a request, uh, from the applicant's representative. Randall Brown and I, uh, went on a site visit alongside Derek Hale, the engineer preparing the documents, uh, last Thursday. I believe it was like, you know, the nicest day of last week, I can tell you that much. Where we reviewed a few factors inside looking at the offsite drainage, um, and provided a few clarifications, uh, for the information that we needed. Uh, but Mr. Hale is requesting to continue that item to February 15th.
Okay. Um, any questions or comments from the board members? All right, um. And we'll, um. Yeah, this has gone on for a while, so I can't designate Jessica tonight. Um, all right, so we will do a, um. Do you have the, do you have the agenda in front of you, John, for the next meeting?
I know that Megan does, but we're gonna push this one off to the 15th.
Uh, sorry, to the 15th, yeah, not for the next meeting. Uh, Meg, what are we looking, are we looking at anything on that meeting?
Wide open.
All right, so we'll just put it at 7:10 again. Uh, so do I hear a motion to continue 159 Berkshire Ave to 7:10 PM on February 15th? Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Marcus Phelps, so move.
Do I hear a second? It'll do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
Don't sing her eye.
Dave Spina, I.
All right. So that'll get moved to 7:10 on the 15th. Um, all right, we got about 10 minutes before the next item. Um. Why don't, it may be worth running through that decision. That's pretty straightforward. We could probably get through that in about 10 minutes. Let me see if I can pull that up here.
Should have a fresh email, has a few moments ago.
Yeah, I thought I just downloaded it, but apparently.
Or I can do the same, your choice.
You just sent it to me, right?
Probably 12 minutes ago.
There we go. All right, sorry. I just hadn't updated. Okay, so let's share this screen for that. Everybody can see this? See if I can. All right. So state law special permit and site plan approval. Stormwater management permit waiver. All right, um. Anybody have anything in the procedural history for changes? Is that date correct, John, that's highlighted here?
If you could change it to December 14th, please. Thank you.
All right, any, any changes to that section, anybody? No, I'm gonna keep going. All right. General findings, section A. Let me know if there's any changes to this section. John, I don't have it in front of me, but it doesn't seem right that the state law will occupy the entirety of the 16.86 acres that comprise the subject parcel.
That is correct. So, uh, this is a parcel that was split off at some point in the past. Less than adequate frontage for a standard lot, but was not permitted, uh, with, as a special permit to state lot.
Oh, that's right. This is, I'm thinking of the, nevermind. Sorry. I didn't catch the 109 and I'm thinking of a different lot. Sorry.
While we're, while we're making reference to that, um, item number four, um, second word, the site singular.
All right, anybody else have anything in the general findings? Section A. All right, well, we will move on to the special permit criteria, section B. Anybody have anything with one through, I guess, six should be on the screen now? Okay, hearing nothing. I'm gonna move on to seven through 17, and I'll give folks a minute. But if at any point you need me to stop or go back, let me know. Change this. All right, anything? Okay, I'm gonna move on to the next section. Special, specific findings, section C. Anything on one through seven? Anything? Okay. You'll go on to eight and nine. And the decision. Anything on those? I'm actually gonna go back. I wanted to look at that decision. I'm gonna go back and, um, indicate that the director, Pete EPW and the planning board. Finding. All right.
Just put a board in there.
What did I forget? Uh, yeah, that would be, that would be useful. Thank you.
Pay attention, Mike.
Yeah. All right, anything on the terms and conditions? We'll just do one right now, one A through C. Hearing nothing, I will go on to two through nine. Anything on two through nine? Well, uh, John, what was? We discussed this last time and I'm blanking on where that came from.
Given that this project, uh, was exempt, uh, from a stormwater permit, we can, we can delete item seven.
Okay. All right, anything through the end here? Okay. Do I hear a motion to grant an estate law special permit and site plan approval for 113 Mort Finding Road? As
Jessica.
In, in, consistent with the, the findings and terms and conditions in this decision.
Marcus Phelps.
Mike, do you need a point? Jessica first?
Uh, she was appointed at the, um, at the public hearing.
Put your little finger second.
Do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
Don't sing her eye.
Jessica Thor and I.
Uh.
Spina wasn't here.
Spina wasn't here, that's right.
Yep, I wasn't there.
I was trying to find, I was wondering why your name wasn't there. All right, um. Will do, uh, do I hear a motion to waive the requirement for a stormwater management permit for 113 Mort Finding Road, um, for the reasons stated in the written decision?
Marcus Phelps, so move.
Third second.
Do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
Don't sing her eye.
Jessica Thor and I.
All right. That is all set. I'll get that over to you, John.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Um. We have to actually sign something, right, for the, um, electronic signatures? Is that? And put it on pile?
I just have, uh, a couple of members need to, uh, manage that, but otherwise the, that particular document, is to go electronic.
Okay, so we don't need to do anything tonight to sort of verify that we can do that. It's just, it'll be what we can do going forward based on that document, once it's all signed. Okay.
That's correct.
All right, then we'll turn to 7:20, um, Hudson Drive, proposed large scale ground mounted solar photovoltaic system, uh, public hearing. Um. Let's see here. All right, well, first let's designate Jessica Thorin as a voting member on this one. Um. Let me read the notice in. Notice is hereby given in accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 11, that the planning board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, January 18th, 2022, at 7:20 PM via Zoom on a special permit, site plan approval, wellhead protection district special permit and stormwater management permit application by Southwick Solar LLC, Care of Energy Development Partners LLC for property on Hudson Drive, north of Slabbrook, zoned industrial restricted and agricultural conservation, and also within the wellhead protection overlay district. The property is shown on current assessor's map 42 parcel two, zoom information provided. The applicant proposes to construct a 4.6 megawatt AC solar array on approximately 20 acres on, at the site. The proposed development is limited to that portion of the property which is zoned industrial restricted and will be heard as a large ground mounted solar photovoltaic system in accordance with the code of Southwick zoning by law, Chapter 183 and 185, sections nine, 10, 19, 22, and 23.2. A copy of the application and plans may be inspected by contact and town planner at his email address. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should appear at the time and manner designated. Michael Doherty, Chairperson, Southwick Planning Board. All right, uh, who is here from the applicant?
Uh, hi, good evening. My name is Tom Saunders. I'm a project manager for EDP.
Good evening.
Thanks for having us.
Yep, so I will just, uh, turn it over to you to give your presentation and then we can sort of take questions and, and, uh, comments from folks afterwards.
Sure. Um, so I'm gonna have Connie Lou, our project engineer, share her screen. Um, so she can kind of provide some visual context here. Like I said, my name is Tom Saunders. I'm a project manager for Energy Development Partners. Um, we also have Ed Abazinis on the line, who is our wetland scientist and environmental consultant. Um, just a little background on us, we are based in Providence, Rhode Island. I'm based in Boston. We're all kind of working remote these days. Um, Connie's in Massachusetts as well. Um, as a firm, EDP's completed development of 66 megawatts of solar capacity in the Northeast, uh, mostly Rhode Island and Massachusetts. Um, and we have about another 200 megawatts currently under development. So we work with investment partners on projects like these, um, and to make sure they're completed, you know, according to local and state requirements and, um, through the construction and operation phase, we'll also continue to monitor and, um, and support the projects as well. So we're in it for the long haul. Um, so the Southwick Solar project is, like you said, a solar photovoltaic generating facility with a battery storage energy system coupled with it, um, to be located on the southeastern corner of map 42, lot two at the end of Hudson Drive. Um, the AC nameplate capacity is 4.6 megawatts. And the DC total capacity is about nine megawatts, excuse me. Um, and we are seeking a special permit, site plan approval and, um, uh, Southwick stormwater permit as well. We've submitted a mass DEP wetland NOI to the Conservation Commission and the DEP. Um, we had our first public hearing on January 3rd of this year. We're scheduled for a site walk with the Conservation Commission on January 25th, which is this coming Tuesday, I believe. And, um, a continuance of that public hearing for February 7th. Um, the limit of work is approximately 24 acres. Panels will be ground mounted with a pile driven racking system. Um, and that footprint of the panels will occupy about 15 acres.
Um, just to interrupt you for one second, sorry, I, I hadn't hit the security, uh, to allow participants to share screen. So if Connie wants to do that now, that should be working.
Okay, yeah, this is the part where the visual starts to help anyways, so that's good. Great, and then, um, the system will be enclosed completely with a seven foot chain link fence per current electrical code standards. Uh, we will have a six inch critter gap at the bottom, uh, per the Conservation Commission's wishes. Um, the existing haul road on the site will be rerouted to the north. Um, to sort of get out of the way of our area and then a portion of the existing haul road will be turned into our access road. You can see that right in the center there, which goes into that hammerhead in the middle of the array. Utility connection will run from the gate across, slightly south across Hudson Drive and then down the, um, the western side of Hudson Drive with poles all along the way to the last or the first existing ever source pole, which is just about 1,000 feet down the road from the gate. Um. Current conditions on site, primarily shrubs and grasses in this area. Um, some immature trees are interspersed. Site overall is very flat, so little to no grading is going to be needed. And no soil will be removed from the site. Um, limited tree trimming and clearing to the south will occur and that'll occur outside of that 200 foot riverfront area. Um, but none of the mature trees that are on that berm around Slabbrook are going to be touched. Um. This parcel is owned by Tilcon Minerals, Inc. And Southwick Solar LLC, which is the project entity, has entered into an optional lease agreement with Tilcon. So that will provide the land rights for the life of the facility. Um, Tilcon has a current earth removal permit and as part of that permit, there's a restoration plan on the lot as a whole. Um, that was renewed in July of 2021. So a facility of this type not explicitly included as a part of that restoration plan. So we will seek an amendment to that restoration plan as part of their permit from the planning board to include this facility. As an acceptable use uh, per the letter that we received through Mr. Goddard from the Town Council. And they outline the specific clauses of that restoration plan, which we would need to uh, which we would need to amend in order to. To allow this use. Um. The facility will be interconnected with ever sources distribution system. And it will be enrolled in the Massachusetts Smart Solar Program for an initial term of twenty years. After that, the facility could attain an extension for anywhere from five to ten years or be decommissioned. Um. And the facility will provide power to the area and area residents while aiding Massachusetts and in our efforts to reduce our reliance on fossil fuels. To generate electricity. Um, so note on decommissioning, we submitted a letter uh, containing a decommissioning plan along with estimates for proposed financial charity. And that's based on a sample that I was provided. Um. That a previous project in the town of Southwick. I believe used and so we'll, you know, we'll work with the town to make sure we reach an agreement that works for everybody on that. Um. And erosion sediment control plan has been included with the plan set. Um, some of the primary features of that plan are sediment barriers along the limited work for the duration of construction. Um, managing a sediment tracking and then in general low impact development measures. Including using the natural topography and minimizing the ground disturbance as much as possible. So. There will be no grading. Within two hundred feet of the two hundred foot riverfront area. Basically, the only grading that would occur would happen as a result of machinery driving, but um, no grading within four hundred feet of Slabbrook. And um, existing vegetation. We intend to preserve to the greatest extent we can, uh, because as it is, it's pretty good and we want to keep it that way. Um. So in accordance with the updated stormwater bylaw in the town of Southwick and mass DEP regs, uh, we've submitted a stormwater. Design, um, and I think the most important takeaway from that is that the stormwater design shows no surface outflow from the onsite drainage basins. To Slabbrook up to the hundred year storm, which was modeled. So the site drains really well. Um. And then the last thing I will say before we can kind of open it up for questions is that. Um, we would request a waiver from or request relief from section H. Uh, number three of chapter one eighty five dash twenty three dot two. Of the solar bylaw, which outlines requirements for landscaping buffer strip uh, for for visuals. To um, to neighboring properties. The site as it is, is not visible to any neighboring properties today, so we would just request a waiver relief from that. Um. And that's really all I have. Um, I'll I'll. Leave it open for some questions at this point.
Let me just ask you on that last point, uh, before I open it up to the board.
Yep.
Um. Would? You're just you're you're doing a land lease of a portion of the property. Is that right?
Yep, correct.
Would would the? Um. Solar be visible? From the remainder of the property if that was developed in the future?
It could be. Uh, I don't I don't. I think I have to say it could be, but.
Cause there's is there the? So what's on the left there? Of the screen is it the access road? Um, and the road that goes into the Tilcon site. Is that right?
Yeah, exactly. And then basically the rest of the property, the northern portion of it Tilcon still is active in. Um, a portion probably immediately to the west of where we are, I I believe is um. Has been excavated and is is now also under a restoration plan. So it's basically similar site conditions on that part. Shrubs and grasses, some immature trees. But.
But there's gonna be no landscaping between the and your proposal between the panels and the um. Uh, not your access road, but the access road to the Tilcon property.
Yeah, that's what I refer to as the hall road. I'm trying to.
Yes, right. You did say that. Thank you. That's what I was trying to think of.
Yeah, that's what we were proposed. Nothing other than what's needed as part of the stormwater design, but no additional sort of row of trees along that. Side because it's not visible from any of the properties to the west.
All right. How much space is between that hall road and the and the panels?
Um.
Generally, I mean, it's it's, you know, it's obviously different in different places, but um.
It's probably anywhere from, you know, ten to twenty feet.
Okay.
But.
Yeah, it's about. It's about fifteen feet.
Right.
Okay. Um. And the only thing I guess I have in my head and certainly the board can discuss it, but um. You know, to the south and east. Um, you know, that that waiver is probably fine. It doesn't make much sense to have anything there. The question becomes whether. To the west and to the north, um, you at least put in the. Possibility that at some future date, you may have to put something in there if that gets developed in some way, because that is a pretty large parcel that may. You know, get developed, um, and you're just taking off a portion of it. Um, so, you know, and then. I could go either way on it, I think, right now, but I just wanted to at least throw that out there and see whether. It sounds like you have enough room between that hall road. If that's ended up ends up to be used as an access road and the solar panels to put in some kind of landscape buffer if if necessary in the future.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, you know, there's two things I would say is that um, the fence along that hall road, I believe we're proposing privacy slats in anyways due to dust more so.
Okay.
There's that aspect and then I think we can, you know, we can definitely entertain the idea of. If there's future development on that section, you know, revisiting that.
Yeah, and I I mean, even with future development, I'm not sure it needs it just because of the nature of the zone that it's in, but. You know, I just I want to at least. Get the. You know, theoretic logistics down of that if that becomes something we want to put in there.
Yeah, yeah, I can't speak to what Tilcon will do with that piece.
Right. All right, um. Let me. Before I turn it over to the board, let me just read in the comments. What I'm gonna do is read in the comments from the um, other. Boards and commissions and. Town officials and um. If at any point, Tom, you want to hop in and address anything as I'm, you know. Going through it, feel free to do so, but let me.
Sure.
I have them from the Building Inspector, DPW, Police and Fire. So let me start with the. Building Inspector. Who says he has no issues with the solar field. It appears well laid out. That's Kyle Scott. Um. We'll go to DPW. Um. Well, let me um. Let me just read them and you've addressed the DPW ones. Um, but so that they're on the record, let me just read them in. Um. So DPW reviewed the plans and stormwater report for the proposed solar field off Hudson Drive per the plans prepared um, by E and LDS dated twelve thirteen twenty twenty one and provides the following comments. One, the stormwater report indicates vegetated filter strips will be installed in and around the solar array. But that does not appear to be shown on the plans. Please clarify the limits of the proposed filter strips on the plans and provide a typical detail. Um, you. Address that by saying that following the proposed construction, the entire site would be grass gently sloped and underlaid by well drained, silty and sandy soils. We felt and have observed that most of the site except for the roads and equipment paths meets the intent of the vegetated filter strip BMP. So we. Did not show the limits of the natural vegetated filter strip on the plan. We will add a typical vegetative cover detail to the plan set to be implemented for any areas disturbed during construction. Um. Their second uh, point was that prior to construction, applicants will file driveway application with the the. The Public Works Department and you have indicated noted. Um. They had no further questions or comments after receiving your responses. Uh, Police Department. After reviewing the plans here, I have very little input as this project does not appear to impact traffic. I will say that I want to make certain that the fence is installed on this project. Um. I. I am sure they are and it is in the plans. It's just that we get complaints of kids messing with equipment in that area. Last thing I want to see is a kid get in that area and get electrocuted. Again, I'm sure this is this is must on there and I just want to make sure it doesn't get missed. Uh, that's Sergeant Paul Miles. Um. And appears that is addressed on your on your plans. Um, and then finally fire. Let's see. Uh, project proponent shall ensure that emergency contact information is posted on signage at any gate in the perimeter fence for the facility. And the project proponent should provide keys for all gates and the facility's perimeter fence to the Southwood Fire Department. Um, I assume there's no issue with either of those pretty minor things.
Correct.
Okay, so that I think John Goddard, feel free to correct me, is all the comments I have.
You've got it.
Um, all right, so I will open it up to the board first if they have any questions or comments.
Marcus Phelps, I had two questions. In the uh. Visual we have now on the screen. What is that rectangular piece there in uh? C dash two zero two panel one?
That is a temporarily laid out area for equipment and materials.
Okay. Alrighty, the second question is, uh, you mentioned battery storage. What types of batteries are these? This is over our wellhead protection area or in our wellhead. Protection area. Are they? Any particular type of battery that could leak or what? What's the provision there?
Um, they. The exact chemistry is. Subject to change. Um, it would be. Um. A self-contained enclosure, usually something like a forty foot Conex container that prevents any leakage of any chemicals out of it.
Okay, yeah, so is there is a containment? Structure around that or how is that set up? Is it on a pad of some kind?
Yeah, it'll be pad mounted.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we might have to consider that in a or a condition. Order of conditions. Uh, the only other thing is it's mentioned, uh. The property is uh, in AC and IR zone, but you're not doing anything in the AC zone?
No, there's a sliver of the property right down in that southeast corner that's in that AC zone, but we're staying completely out of that.
Okay. Oh, I see on the right southeast corner. Okay. Yeah, very good. Thank you.
You are welcome. Thanks.
Okay, uh, any other? Board questions? And actually, let me just preface this by saying that um. Um, my, I guess presumption, but my assumption maybe is that this will be continued from tonight. Um. If only for the reason that conservation still needs to. Do their thing and we need final plans before that is we approve it. So um, just so that everybody is aware of that as we go along. Um, any other board members have any? Comments or questions?
Those days. The day's been here. Um. I was looking at the decommissioning plan. And I see they used a. One and three quarter percent inflation rate to project out the decommissioning cost. Twenty years from now. Just wondering what the basis for one and three quarter percent was?
Uh, it's a number that we go with to kind of just make sure we get to where we need to be. At the at the end of the plan.
Yeah, I mean. My gut feel is that one and three quarter percent. Is probably even lower than historical average, definitely lower than what we've probably seen in the last couple of years and. May see in a little while longer, so. I don't know. I think it might make sense to revisit. That rate. I think it's too low.
Yeah, we can certainly take a look and and work with you guys to get it. To get where we need to be.
All right. Uh, any other board comments or questions?
Just confirm that the property that isn't going to be touched is all within the industrial restricted raft. So anything that gets placed there. Is going to be part of that zoning requirement, correct?
You mean everything that we touch is in the industrial restricted zone?
And everything that's remaining of the parcel that in in regards to the waiver for the buffer zone. Anything that's going to be built over there is going to be industrial.
Right.
Based upon its current zoning. Is that correct, John?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and to confirm the entirety of the fence is supposed to be privacy slatted or is it your intention just for that side?
Just that side. The rest of this be open chain link.
Okay. That's all my.
Yep.
All right. Any other uh? Questions or comments from the board? All right, um. Any uh? Town officials or um, board or commission members have any questions or comments?
Mr. Doherty, John Goddard. Uh. Tom, has your team given any thought or do you have any input? Uh, into? I suppose either giving us a cut sheet um, or uh, an experience with those slats. Uh, you know, we've got a pretty tremendous open. Space. We've got a pretty tremendously long fence line. Um, and I know that uh. I'm gonna say previous generations of PVC slats as they deteriorate. Um, well, they're noisy and then ineffective. Um, and of course, there's a visual component as well. Um, in some experiences, I've seen them use winged, if you will, slats. I don't know about the long term durability uh. Due to UV on those. Do you have any insight onto what the proposal would be over there?
Uh, do we have detail on the on the privacy slats, Connie?
No, we we don't yet.
Okay, well, we can certainly provide that.
Sure, just a little insight looking towards, if you will, that that durability um, factor so that this is doesn't become a. You know, a seasonal maintenance issue.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Um, any other town officials, board or commission members have any questions or comments? All right, I'm seeing none. Uh, I will open it up to any public questions or comments. You could just use the hand raise function. That would be great. Anybody? Oh, I see Nancy. Kotovitz, is that? You just unmute yourself, please, Nancy?
Okay, got it.
There you go.
Hi, I'm Nancy Kotowitz from Shaker Farms Country Club and on my wing is Dan Kotowitz. Um.
Hold on one second, Nancy. I think, do you have two?
Did you unmute? Shut my. Okay.
That's.
You may have to. Um, so we're concerned. We're concerned. Go bring it outside. We had two computers going just in case.
We've we've been there before, so um, all right, it sounds better now, I think.
Okay, so we're concerned. We have the um, sand and gravel permit that um, abuts Tilcon's property. Yeah. And there is a road that we're hoping someday to, you know, make it a road that goes from Sam West Road. It doesn't touch Hudson Road and it turns into Pondo, Pontalo, Pontalo?
Yeah.
And um ends up at Shaker Road. And when we did the sand and gravel permit, we were mandated by actually the town of Southwick to put that road in the plans. So we're wondering if the solar system is touching that road or if it's going around it. And if it's going around it, are we somehow going to be able to get access to that?
Eventually. Are we, you know, it's basically wondering how this is going to affect the intersection of Hudson Drive, Sam West Road, which later turns into Pond Hollow.
Sam West and Hudson do not touch right now.
Right, so that's a paper road as well that's being looked at right now for connection. Um, and what you're saying is that there's a basically a paper road on your permit which goes and connects to Hudson?
No, it doesn't connect to Hudson. It goes from Sand West to Pond Hollow and then goes to Shaker Road.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay.
It it misses Hudson by, I don't know, maybe.
Well, Hudson Hudson doesn't get finished on the uh, on the, on the Tilcon uh maps and I'm not sure where where the town or the the town maps and how they connect there, but our concern is just making sure that the
We have access to that.
Hudson Drive is going to connect because we're, our, our um
Intention.
Our intentions in, in once we get done with the uh, with the uh, um, the mining of the sand there is our, our, our planning for additional, you know, um, one of our uh one of our um, uh, plans in, in uh revitalizing that area would be the use of Sam West, Hudson Drive, Sam West and Pond Hollow Road.
So we just want to make sure we're not gonna be cut off.
Just wanna make sure we're not gonna get cut off or we're gonna.
We just want to make sure we have access because we've been trying to get this done for a while now, get this road, you know, marked as a road.
All right, um.
I don't think it touches it. I think it misses it, but we just want to make sure that we're still open to that, you know, down the road. No pun intended.
No, that's, my sense, if they're working on the east side there is that it's not going to have an impact. But I guess let me ask either John Goddard or Tom whether they've seen a plan with that paper road on it and whether it impacts that at all.
Um, I think that it was submitted with our uh permit.
Yeah, it was submitted with our uh.
With our original permit and it's, then the road is on there.
So I haven't seen it, but what the intent is, is that basically where you see this cul-de-sac down in kind of the southern part where the cursor is? You know, basically right there, Hudson Drive just gets rerouted to the north of it and it'll rejoin the existing hall road up north. So all that happens is that just gets straightened down a little.
Well, I just want to make sure that if the the road, if Pontalo Road is through your um solar panels, that we're not cut off from that road. You know what I mean? I'm not sure exactly where Pon- um Pontalo goes through through um to Sam West, but you know, I just want to make sure it's not through the middle of your um slots and then we can't have access to that road.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure where that road is either, so we can.
I can bring it down. I can scan this.
I think, you know, John, if you could help us out here a little bit, maybe uh getting them to identify or locate the where Sam West Road is going to come through the uh the parcel, Tilcon's parcel.
And hooks up with.
And then hooks up with Hudson, Hudson Drive eventually. It doesn't right now, but eventually.
It might.
It's all the, all of the reconstruction plans or all the reuse plans show, you know, Hudson Drive continuing further down into the, into that Tilcon area. And then it shows where Sam West Road comes through from Tannery Road. And then eventually we'll hook up with Pond Hollow.
Yes, Ponder's Hall, by the way.
It's Pond Hollow. I, I show Pond Hollow Road.
On, on the map.
On our um.
On the C dash.
On our earth excavation site.
Yeah, see, I just don't have a clue what Pond Hollow is, so I'm having trouble trying to figure out where that
John goes. Um. Mike's talking.
Yep, Ponder's Hall starts to the south side of the Christian Missionary, I'm sorry, the Westfield Evangelical Free Church. It cuts across from there.
No, it's Pond Hollow, not Ponder's.
We show Pond Hollow on our, on our, on our.
Either way, I mean.
I understand.
Starts the south side of the Christian, uh, the Westfield Evangelical Free Church.
Oh, okay.
County Road.
No, no, that's the one, that's the, that's the one at the end of Shaker. That's the.
Yeah, exactly. It's not.
Pond Hollow, not Ponder's Hollow. Pond Hollow comes up by the farm there. What's the name of the guy's farm there?
Comes out.
By the conservation guy there with Winding River. Pond Hollow comes out in that area. It's, you know, by the field there. We've walked it. We can bring this map um over to the city tomorrow.
Should be in, it should be in, John, John Goddard should have it in there. No, you should have it in your files.
There's at least five reasons why I should know this by heart and I wish I could have it off of my head.
So.
We have the, um, I can bring this map in tomorrow so you guys can see it. I just wanted, we just want to make sure that it's not gonna, that's not gonna impede our ability to go from Sam West to Pond Hollow. That's all we want to make sure.
And that's.
The other thing, the other concern that we have is there are a lot of, um, what do you call it, motorbikes?
Yeah, they're all, you know, I, I'd like to um.
Just to be, so just so you know that there's motorbikes there all the time. They, they're crazy drivers. So just to make sure it's safe and I just want to make sure that your fence is high enough because it's going to be dusty where the hollow is.
Yeah, um, yeah, dirt bikes are something we've dealt with before and you know, we're gonna take up a little bit of their room, but hopefully they sort of stay away and then as far as fence height goes. You know, we considered dust from the hall road. And that's why we're putting slats in that side and then seven feet is, is the electrical code standard.
And then eventually, you know, what they said with the bushes in the back, that'd be great.
Yeah, I think, I think you ought to, you know, I, I concur with Mr. Doherty in the fact that uh you know, it'd be nice to see some vegetation, especially to the north side. That's going to be the area. That'll be um.
That will do something to.
You know, it, it, it'll be seen from, from our property, from where our property line is there too. Some type of vegetation, maybe, you know, some type of bush, you know, vegetation, whether it be, you know, small pines, dwarf pines or something of that nature, because it'll be easily seen from from our um, our property.
Yeah, certainly, if there's future development that.
Yeah, I, I think that's important.
Yep.
I have to agree with Mr. Doherty on that.
And you're lucky you're at the north, so we can go as tall as you want.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, so we'll take a look at where, I mean, I, you know, I can't, I'm looking on a map and I'm just not seeing that, but I, I I get the sense that it's not going to be impactful just because
Yeah.
It's Sam West is, is going to be over on the, on the um west side of this map here where it ends currently.
I will say.
We show, we, we have maps showing that Sam West is coming through the Tilcon property.
And it, it goes right through the.
And, and it goes to the north.
So it, and they're going to, they're, they're potentially going to connect Sam West and Hudson Drive. That's what's being studied right now. It's been talked about for years and years.
Yeah.
Um, it's being studied now and may happen. I think that's what you may be referring to and it may be like I said, a paper road somewhere in the plans, just to have that sort of mapped out, but it's not connected now. The uh, Sam West ends at the rail trail currently.
Correct.
Well, they put a gate there, so we don't have access to it. And actually, we have to pay Tilcon to go through their property when we actually could have access through this paper road.
Right, so hopefully that, you know, I think for a lot of reasons, it'd be good to have that um developed. So that's what they're looking at right now.
Yeah, and all I'll add is that, you know, we've, we've done a title report on the property and if there was any easements that showed up, we wouldn't have blocked them, so we'll just confirm where this is and, and make sure.
Well, we can confirm, we can confirm, well, you know, I'd like to see uh because we have it in our title also in our, in our deed showing the uh, the Pond Hollow Road does exist as a right of way through that area. And we just want to be sure that that's not blocked and it's, you know, eventually we, you know, making sure that Hudson Drive does join up to uh Sam West Road.
Right, and we're aware of that plan. We've, you know, basically designed this to not interfere with that.
Okay.
But I just want to make sure it doesn't, Pontalo doesn't go through that.
Sure. Yeah.
Down to John tomorrow.
And John, if you want to give, um, if you want to give them my contact info, please do. And um the map that you have.
Okay.
All right, um, any other public comments or questions? Just quickly scroll through here. If you can use the hand raise function that's on the uh, on Zoom, that's great, but if not, you know, feel free to jump in because it's tough to run through the list of people here.
It looks like a Darcy Grimaldi.
Actually, it's Bob Grimaldi.
Go ahead, Bob. Just give your name and address, please, or your address.
Bob Grimaldi, seven eighty seven College Highway is where our farm is. Uh, I had a couple of questions for Tom. Uh, one was timeframe on this. If, when would they begun, begin? When would it be done? And secondly, uh, is the substation on South, South College Highway able to handle that four point six, was that preordained?
So I'll, I'll start at the start here. Um, construction, we want to try to enter construction possibly by the end of this year. If not early twenty twenty-three and it should last for, you know, we would anticipate anywhere from six to eight months, complete start to finish. As far as the substation goes, you know, we're in study with the utility and we do we do believe that there is capacity for the, for the project, yes.
The only other question, how long have you worked with the electric company for your project?
How long have I worked?
Has this been something that's gone on for the last couple of years?
This specific project?
Yeah.
Uh, no, this, this project's been in the works with the town for the last four or five months roughly.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any other uh public questions or comments? All right. Um, I'll turn it to the board one last time if they had any questions or comments that came about from any of that discussion. Otherwise, I'm planning on continuing this. Um, Tom, are you, when are you with conservation next?
Uh, that's February seventh, so we would, we would go for the fifteenth, hopefully.
Okay, all right, perfect. Um, all right, uh, board members, anything else that you have before I continue this? All right, uh, do I hear a motion to continue to uh, seven twenty on the fifteenth?
Arcus Phelps, so moved.
Do I hear a second? Do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, aye.
Arcus Phelps, aye.
Richard Ossinger, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Jessica Thornton, aye.
All right, so seven twenty PM on February fifteenth. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate the time and we will be in touch.
Yeah, have a good evening.
Thanks, you too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, right on time, seven thirty. One Hudson Drive. Uh, I see Andy here. He's got to unmute Andy, I think. I don't know if you, is it just you or is it anybody else?
Uh, just me.
Okay, all right. So let me just pull up your file here and we will go from there. And I will designate Jessica on this one as well. All right, notice is here by given in accordance with the provision of chapter forty A, section eleven um, of the Mass General Laws, the planning board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two at seven thirty PM via Zoom. On an application by additional attic public storage, Inc., requesting to amend the existing special permit, site plan approval and wellhead protection district special permit decision for property located at one Hudson Drive in the industrial restricted zone and wellhead protection district. The property is shown on current assessors map sixty-seven parcel two. Zoom information provided. The applicant is seeking to amend special permit conditions for the existing public self-storage facility at the site in accordance with the Code of Southwick zoning bylaws, chapter one eighty-five, sections nine, ten, nineteen and twenty-two. Copy of the application and the plans may be inspected by contacting town planner at his email address. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should appear at the time and manner designated. Michael Doherty, chairperson, Southwood Planning Board. Okay, um, Andy, I have the application and the plans or the old plans. If at any point, um, you want John or I to bring something up on the screen, just let us know and we can certainly do that if it's easier. Otherwise, I sort of turn it to you to, you know, present what you want to present and we'll go from there.
All right, thank you. Um, I'm a little nervous with the whole Zoom format. It's a little more unnerving than being in the room. To answer a question John had, I know the slats last at least fifteen years. If you want to come by and inspect mine and see how they doing? You're more than welcome. Um, they're pretty, still pretty fresh. Um, I don't know, you want me to go through everything I submitted to you folks, the history and everything, or do you want to just jump into what we're looking at for, for changes for the permit?
Yeah, you can jump in. I mean, I think people have had a chance to um, look at your application. It was, you know, certainly circulated. So you don't need to go through word by word by any stretch of the imagination. If you want to hit the high points of what you're looking for, um, you know, and, and so we can have the discussion, that would be great.
All right, um, well, when I first submitted and started talking about building a self-storage on Hudson Drive in two thousand and two, um, it seemed as though the uh, board members and a lot of elected or appointed officials in town had a negative view of the storage industry and right out of the gate, I was told it's not going to happen. So the permit was written and council at that point suggested to me, take what you have and run and come back later and amend it. So it's fifteen years later and we're coming back to amend it. Some of the things in the permit aren't consistent with what other permits um in town are written as. And I can just jump right in. You, you folks just described that estate lot that you were talking about and um, one of the things in the estate lot was like one C for that estate lot. Um, it discussed like they can't sell that property and use it for something else at later use. Now, my permit, um, line five, it states no other activity other than the glass shop and the storage units. So like if the glass shop closes down and I want to move in a, a, another business that's allowed in that district, according to the permit, I have to come back and ask for a permit modification. So I just kind of wanted to adjust a few things in the permit so that I can come in and get board approval, but I don't have to do a permit modification like on number five. I just want the language adjusted so that it's consistent with other things in town and consistent with the bylaws that already exist.
Let me, let me just stop you right there for one second, Andy, on that one. Um, and, and just to sort of clarify the example that you gave, right? So estate lots a little bit different because that's, that's a residential lot. That's all it's being used for in any way going forward. Um, I I can only speak to my experience on the board, right? I've been on there since two thousand and fourteen. My, you know, we're a use board and so you are constrained by the use that is included in the special permit. And so um, you know, and some uses are broader than others, right? You can have general retail use and, and you know, you probably get away with a bunch of different types of retail potentially, but you know, if your, if your use is to do a certain thing, your special permit is constrained to that and you have to come back and get a modification of the special permit. your special permit is constrained to that and you have to come back and get a modification of the special permit, no matter what property you are. I'm not sure estate lots are, 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 you know, comparing apples to apples because those are, those are by definition residential. So it's not like an estate lot can, you know, put a commercial building up there and not have to come back to the planning board.
I, yeah, I, I fully understand. It's not apples to apples and, um, but if I have a business move in, what, what I'm asking is, um, and other properties on Hudson Drive have this. Can we change that wording so that other approved businesses in that zone can simply move in with board approval, not with permit modification? So if I lease those bays, say, to someone who's just, you know, shipping and receiving clothing for, for like a little online business, I don't have to come for modification of the permit. I just come for board approval because it's allowed in the zone already. Or, you know, or if, uh, a business already existing on Hudson Drive wants to expand into the auto glass base, we can come to the board and say, can we do this? You say yes, we move on. And I see that in other permits that as long as it's consistent with bylaws, it's allowed on my property.
But what you have to, uh, I, I'm someone who needs specifics. So what other permits on Hudson Drive are you referring to that I can look at and say, okay, this is what he's talking about, whether that's reasonable or not to have, you know, for your, for your permit.
Um, I can pull those out. I know I read through like seven or eight permits and that seemed to be in there. Um, the, the last property on the left, um, used to be a machine shop. I, I believe had that in there. I, you know, I would have to look through.
Yeah. I mean, if you certainly, you can pull those out and show them to me. I'm happy to, you know, entertain adjusting the language and making it slightly more broad, but as a general matter, you know, every permit that I'm aware of that I've at least dealt with, you know, has some specificity to it. And if you want to put something else in, you gotta come and change it. I mean, I, I, I think that's the case for, for most properties, but you know, like I said, I'm happy to see if there's a way to broaden it somewhat.
Okay. Yep. Yeah. And I'm okay with the, the specificity or however you pronounce that there. But, um, as long as it's like specific to things that are already allowed by bylaw as compared to like only a glass shop. Cause right now it's only a glass shop.
Yeah, but you're in the IR zone. So there's nothing, uh, well, it's not nothing, but there's very few things that are allowed in that zone by right.
Yeah. All right.
So, you know, if it's allowed by right, it's allowed by right and they don't have to come to the board, but i- if it, there's very few things in that. I, I just don't have it in front of me. I can't, you know. Um, that's not the one with the, that business restricted is the one with the bank, right? I forget what's in the IR, but there's very few things. Uh, it's probably the book binding one, right? Uh, there's very few things allowed in the IR zone by right.
Okay. I'll dig through that and, and I'll come back with you. I, I figure this is going to continue for at least one more time around.
Yeah, there's a lot here. So we got it, you know, and probably we'll take a couple just to get our heads around everything and make sure that we're doing, you know, justice to you and your request.
Um, all right. Um, the next one, like, um, also in number five on my permit restrictions of, uh, commercial and retail sales. And that was in bylaw in two thousand and two, when I started this whole process and it's since been taken out of bylaw, that that area was restricted from wholesale and retail sales. Um, and the board back then realized that Wally Computer was already doing commercial and retail sales from their building in that area. And quarry truck and landscape supply was already doing commercial and retail sales. Um, so that it was kind, it's kind of hard not to have commercial sales in an industrial park. That's kind of the whole point to an industrial park is to sell stuff that you make commercially. Um, so technically even like B and E tool, I guess, is making parts and selling them commercially. Um, so it's in my permit still, and I just wanted that adjusted out that commercial and retail sales is something that's allowed on the property.
Well, but what, so just, I, and I apologize for stopping you, but I think it'll be more productive to kind of stop on some of these and just get some clarification, at least in my mind. Uh, so I apologize for that. What do you refer, I, I mean, to me, there's a distinction between a, a commercial or retail facility, um, operation that is using your self-storage for, for storage, right, of things that they're going to sell. Um, and the sort of sale takes place somewhere else versus the sale taking place at the storage facility. I mean, those are, I, I think what's being prohibited is, you know, basically using one of those storage facilities to conduct sales. Versus, you know, using it to store things that are going to be sold. I, I don't think that that's being prohibited.
I would agree with you. I don't want the facility to turn into an open air bazaar, you know, kind of thing, you know, open market, um, although it would be nice to have in Southwick and open the market. Boots and vegetables. You know, but to prohibit it, it can be prohibited in the storage units, but in the front building and in general on the property. Um, it's not prohibited in the zone anymore, but somehow it's prohibited on my property.
All right. Well, let's go, let's, let's move on. I understand what you're saying there. Okay. Go ahead.
Um, outside storage, number seven is, is prohibited. In two thousand and three, there was a self-storage up in Westfield that the planning board repeatedly referred to and arguably that place was a disaster. Um, they had like outside sheds and storage containers and all sorts of things and disrepair parked around different manners. Um, and I could see that they didn't want that light brought to Southwick. Um, but I'm prohibited from all outside storage, motorized, non-motorized. Doesn't matter what it is. I can't put it outside. Um, and I would like to have that taken away or adjusted. Um, there's no reason I shouldn't be able to park a travel trailer on the property.
Other than the fact that you're over the wellhead, uh,
What, what's in a travel trailer that's gonna hurt the wellhead?
No, 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 no. And I'm not saying travel trail. I mean, I, I, you know, part of that has to take into account you being over the wellhead, obviously. Um, but I, you know, you're, you're, you're right in that there's probably, I'm not sure there's going to be a huge visual issue, um, with stuff being stored outside in some degree. Um, it's done in other self-storage. Um, I don't love it, but it's, you know, in that where you are is probably not a visual issue. So we can probably talk about some degree, but I think you have to factor in that you are over the wellhead.
Oh, absolutely. And, and with the shape of our property being an L shape, us being behind our neighbors, I mean, it would be behind the existing industrial land in front of us. So, you know, the, what, what's already facing Hudson Drive, we wouldn't be lining things up on the tree line on Hudson Drive. It would be, um, behind, uh, Comey Concrete and behind Mark's Property Service. You know, we'd be putting it there. So you, you would never even see it from the road. Um, you know, other than looking through their properties, you know, four hundred feet back.
Yeah.
Um, but, you know, a lot of these things are more looking for adjustment.
Yep.
You know? Uh, item ten on our permit requires our buildings to have a minimum pitch and finish type. It refers to a two twelve pitch. Um, would like this removed. Um, doesn't appear in other permits in the area um, that I read and the industry, the storage industry now likes to go with a half twelve or a quarter twelve pitch. Um, they use a standing seam roof, roof with no screws through the surface. So they're able to go with a much more flat roof. It still gives the appearance of, you know, somewhat of a pitch. But it's a lot more economical to build.
Yeah, and we can certainly, I mean, and that one doesn't bother me that much. I, the, the, you know, reduction of glare may be useful to still have in there because that, you know, I, I had to think through that one, but the, you know, where you are again in the IR zone, you're not going to have design guidelines that necessarily apply to you. Um, it's not going to be all that visible. So I'm not sure I have that big of an issue with that, but we'll see how the board thinks.
And maybe I can bring an example of roofing and we can determine whether there's glare or not. That's the thing.
Yeah. And I just got, like I said, I think I got to think through that, at least from my own opinion, but, um, all right.
Number fourteen, uh, really refers to fencing a lot and it's just kind of written a little goofy. Uh, one of the first sentences, says prior to conservation approval, we needed to install a fence, which is a long time ago, um, but we're going to be looking for conservation approval again. Um, and truly we can't install a fence until everybody approves. So it's just kind of grammatically incorrect. So we're hoping for that just to be corrected. Um, and then the second sentence refers to like the entire property being fenced. But we'd like just the developed part, you know, for it to state that. And then, um, we've already addressed in the past, the opaque fencing, but the opaque fencing was to, uh, extend across the front of the property as well, across the gates with like a brick face or a rock fencing. And I know in the past we did take the PVC slats out, but I like that part about the front rock face, brick face also.
All right. And that's, you know, I mean, I think it's, um, it's one of those where I'm not sure it's individually worth the application, but since it's here, you know, it is more of a time sensitive issue from back when the permit was first issued, right? It's probably worth reworking it to be more forward looking at this point in time, given what exists and what may exist. So um, that's probably worth, you know, whether it changes in, in great detail, I don't know, but I think it's probably worth looking at it going, looking forward because it makes the most sense and it's in front of us.
Yeah. And some of this certainly is me kind of clean in the closet while we're in here. We might as well adjust it all. Get it, yep, in, into where it should be.
Yep.
Number fifteen, uh, required us to have two handicap parking spots. Um, and I looked that up again, um, on the mass guidelines. We were supposed to have one parking spot back then, but we're required to have two currently. We'd like to get that back to one.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, again, I don't, uh, I'd have to look to see what is required, but if that's, it seems two seems a lot for twelve parking spots.
Right?
Again, I'm not sure I have a huge issue with that, especially I, I imagine you're not, the parking spots are not being used with all that regularity over there, but maybe I'm wrong.
It's usually not a traffic jam of handicap people looking to get in there, use the, the two spots.
Or any, I mean, or anybody, is there a, a lot of use for your parking on a daily basis?
Uh, the people come and go pretty quick.
That's what I assume.
Yeah. I mean, nobody hangs around for more than ten minutes.
Right.
So it's a pretty quick flow.
Okay.
Number eighteen, uh, the restriction requires that all doors be orientated in, to the interior of the property. Um, with, this is going to be really hard to do as we move forward. And it's not, not, you know, I, I can understand what the board was, you know, they don't want to see a storage facility. They don't want to see a U-Haul bright orange storage facility and the brown boxes from Westfield dumped in Southwick. Um, and I think we've shown that that's not what we're going to do. That's not what we're about. Um, and the industry as a whole has grown past that a lot. Um, but for us to develop the back part of the property and keep all the doors orientated internally is going to be super difficult.
Yeah. And I, you know, it's, it's a bit of a, um, in my mind, a probably a little too broad, uh, maybe not back then, but it's probably a little bit too broad of a, um, condition for what it's trying to accomplish. I mean, I think it's the visual impact that they're trying to address. And so just address that and don't, don't tie it to one particular thing. Um, I'm not sure the orientation of doors really necessarily is, is all that important. It's how it visually looks more than anything else.
And, and there's interestingly enough, they didn't ever address the color of the facility, which by the way is the same colors as the town hall and the DPW. And that wasn't by mistake on my part. Um, they never discussed the color of the facility. So I could have put a lime green and orange facility in and met all the criteria of this permit.
Now you've missed your opportunity, Andy. You, you know, I mean,
Right.
we may have to put a specific condition on that.
I'm good with that. I can, I can keep going. It's, it's, I kind of like it. It, it works for me. You know, I've done a lot to try to keep the place looking nice. And even when the solar panels guys put the solar panels on my roof, they wanted to put all the boxes on the front and all the galvanized conduit across the front of the building. And I stopped them. They were, they had to go back another day and start all over again. And all that conduit, the galvanized and all the control boxes are in the back of the building. Because I didn't want to have to look at it and I didn't want the rest of y'all have to look at it either. You know, we all got to live with this stuff. You know, I got to live with it every day.
All right. So tell me about the, tell me about the wellhead stuff with the spill containment units.
So there's just the one in the spill containment. And that requires us to have that spill containment in our foundations. Um, uh, looking through the other bylaws, other businesses don't seem to have that. Um, other businesses are allowed to have toxic chemicals. They're allowed to have, um, in this wellhead protection zone. Print shops are allowed in the wellhead protection zone, uh, you know? Um, but there's plenty of fifty-five gallon drums on Hudson Drive and none of the permits require this. My facility, we do not allow this stuff in our facility. We do have surveillance cameras. We do take notice. Um, and it's, and it's, and it's in the contract. It's posted on the property. You can't have that stuff here. And yet we have to have a spill containment system. We do walk the property, uh, at least once a day, every day. Um, it's, it's kind of an excessive expense for something that's already restricted in the property.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I don't know. I don't know every permit on Hudson Drive and I don't know, you know, the timeframes of, of when things got built versus, you know, what existed for bylaws or frankly, when this, you know, spill containment's the, the sort of evolution of the technology for the spill containment systems. I, I mean, I just don't know it well enough, but I can tell you that at least since I've been on the board, we've had this discussion about every single permit that's come up over the wellhead. I mean, I, I, you know, I know there are places that have not been able to lease to folks that they want to lease to because of that added expense. Um, it's just, and I, I will happily tell you that it's a, you know, and as I'm sure you understand, it's a poorly designed location for an industrial park, uh, to put over a wellhead. I mean, it's just, but it's what we have and, and we sort of have to deal with it. You know, I mean, we can, we can talk more about it, but in my mind, this is going to be your uphill battle because, you know, we, we've really had to try to protect it. And I, like I said, I, I'm, again, I'm happy to look at other permits and see specifically what's in those, especially more recent ones. I'm not necessarily personally sold to the argument that we shouldn't change stuff going forward if necessary, just because other ones weren't done, you know, twenty years ago. Um, but I'm, I'm more than happy to listen to it and look at other language. I just, you know, this has been something we've discussed a lot and we've, we've held at least the recent applicants to this requirement. You know, and I, I don't know if there's a way around it and I'm, I'm also happy to try to work through exceptions or language that would allow some, you know, play there, but, you know, we're pretty protective of that wellhead and this is one of the things we've been using to try to protect that.
When I, when I sat and listened to Southwick Storage's hearings in two thousand and two and two thousand and three, hazardous materials were never brought up once in those hearings. Um, when he came in recently for his expansion, hazardous materials were never brought up in his hearing. And I understand he's not in the wellhead protection, but he is a self-storage. And you're asking a self-storage, me, to do something because you're concerned about hazardous materials and self-storage. Um, when the gentleman came in and proposed putting a new self-storage across from the Old American Inn, it wasn't breached in the, in the very few conversations that were had with him, hazardous materials were not breached. Um, all the residential properties, it truly, there's no, it, it's not discussed. And then, you know, all the residential properties and even the commercial properties, the town has no control what's popped into those after they're built. Um, we as owners of a self-storage, so we have seventy tenants right now. If I throw one tenant out because I don't like what he's doing, I lose one seventieth of my revenue. It doesn't bother me in the lease to throw ten tenants out. And I have great motivation to throw you out if I don't like what you're doing. And I do have the right to entry right in my contract without cause or notice. And that's something the town of Southwick doesn't have with any other property in this town. They can't just cut a lock and come into my house and say, Andy, you got this in your basement. We don't like it. I can cut the lock on your storage unit. If I don't like what's in there, you're moving out. And I lose one seventieth of my income. It doesn't matter to me other than I get you out. So I have great motivation to keep it clean and I have great ability to keep it clean. And I'm I'm a far more protective property than any other property in town. So as we move forward in the conversation, I'd just like those to be kept in mind that we did think of this going in. Back in two thousand three, I wasn't going to work that because, like I said, council back then said, Andy, take your permit and go build your facility and come back later and have the discussion.
Yeah, I mean, I and I appreciate that and I don't, you know, I don't know your business. I haven't been over there and I I'm going to take you at your word and 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 that that's what you do. But the way I look at it is a little differently in the sense that it's just risk assessment for me, right? I mean, I I can look at a business and and say, you know, what they need to run their business and um, uh, you know, whether there's a uh chance that they're going to have uh substances in their building, which, you know, you may need to protect from leaking into the into the um, the the wellhead and and that's, you know, you you have some degree of clarity with that. When you're dealing with self-storage, you're relying on you to sort of catch someone who's doing that, and that may not always be the case and and easy to do. And there's, there's just increased risk. I mean, I'm not saying that you're not doing a good job or that you're not paying attention to it. It's just inherently, there's increased risk in that. Um, because people can bring in what, you know, you, instead of one person who you're sort of controlling, you're controlling seventy different people at any given time. Um, so there's increased risk. Um, again, I, you know, not to say that we won't discuss it. I just, that's the way I am looking at it, I think, a little differently than you. Um.
And I I drove around today to two different, I went and looked at two different self-storages and um one of them was gated with cameras and the other one had no gates, no cameras, just drive in, do what you want. And I would agree with you, the guy with no cameras and no gates, no access control, um, you know, he's looking for trouble um, in a lot of different ways, not just, you know, what we're talking about here. But once you add gates and cameras, if if somebody's going to get rid of toxic waste, they're just going to go to the end of Hudson Drive and push it off. They're not going to rent for me, show ID, be on cameras, have to have to, you know, keypad in to my facility to show that they were there and be on their camera coming in. They're just going to go to the hide in the Hudson Drive and push it off. Um, but you know, they're not gonna, they're not going to waste their time paying me rent. So I mean, if you're going to assess it, then let's seriously assess it and look at it. Like these, these are self-storages, all different levels, and these different levels of self-storages do have different levels of risk. Absolutely. You know, those ones without fences, they're just looking for trouble, like I said, in so many different ways. You know, just old mattresses and couches for starters.
Yeah, but you're, I mean, you're you're, you have a, I think, inherent flaw in your argument, which is what you're you're saying, you you you're talking about waste, right? And people are just going to go dump it somewhere else, but I'm not thinking about waste. I'm thinking about substances that people are going to use and want to store, right? I mean, there's plenty of toxic chemicals or, you know, um oil or whatever else that is being stored by individuals for use going forward. And so that's more what I'm looking at, not waste, but storage for future use. And I think that's a lot tougher to control. You know, eh, regardless of the number of cameras or how attentive you are, I just, again, there's just increased risk in that in that, in that setup. It's just inherent in it. Um. But all right, so let me, is that, did that cover all the requests, Andy?
That is what I have.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, so why don't, um, I read in in John, correct me if I'm wrong, I think I have building inspector, police and fire for comments.
That's correct.
Okay, so let me just read in these comments. Um, then we'll open it up to board. The board and town officials and the public and go forward. Um. Again, Andy, as I did, you put, I don't know if you heard me in the last public hearing, you may have been on or not, I I didn't notice. Um. Eh, if at some point, you you know, it's something you can address or you want to address the comment, feel free to hop in when I'm done. Um, it'll just sort of make it more interactive and and move it forward. Um, but let me read these into the record. First is from the building inspector. Um, one thing I would be careful of is in other communities, I have had self-storage facilities evolve into incubator space for small businesses. In both of these cases, the storage facilities became problematic with increased traffic noise and other issues. As far uh as really from the section of the permit for spill containment, I would feel it's logical to not touch that and it should remain conditioned as it is environment, as it is an environmentally sensitive area. Other than these concerns, I am fine with the rest of the proposed changes and would defer to the planning board. So that's from Kyle Scott. Uh, police. After reviewing the application, I only have one or two points to cover. The first is his claim that a police officer told him that it would be preferential to not have an opaque fence. I don't know who he spoke to, so I cannot speak to his veracity. That said, a fence that we, the police can see through would be better than an opaque fence in that it would make it easier for officers to view while on patrol. The request to reduce the number of handicap spaces appears to be in keeping with the requirements posted on the mass.gov website. It would appear that he only needs one. As to the storage of toxic materials, I would have to refer to others such as the fire chief for an opinion on that matter. Uh, that's all his input. That's Sergeant Paul Miles. And from the fire department, um, Chief Anderson has no comment on that application. All right, uh, so board members, any questions or comments? Anyone? Nothing? Okay. Town officials or board or commission members have any questions or comments?
Senator, this is John Goddard. Um, in reflecting back to Andy's uh discussion about use, um, the the retail sales and so on and so forth, I think um board members will find that that it would appears, again, without scouring minutes, but uh it's my interpretation as that that was tailored to uh the self-storage component uh itself, although perhaps um you know, I wouldn't say tragic, but perhaps, you know, poorly worded in general. Um, uh, but I want to reflect upon that in light of uh some of the points that Andy brought up uh earlier.
So similar to what Kyle Scott mentioned, he doesn't want that. That's the scenario that we're trying to protect against versus simply storage of retail items, I suppose.
That's, that's correct. Uh, so as as UN board members, um, we read that uh that condition, I think you'll see uh in light of uh Andy's points and Kyle using that incubator term, we can better start to understand what they were trying to protect against, apparently, at least in my interpretation.
Okay. All right. Um, any other town officials or board or commission members have any questions or comments? All right, any uh public questions or comments? No one. Okay. Well then. Um. So let's, let's go back here. I mean, Andy, are you, you know, you just heard what John mentioned. Um, if we talk about that sales provision, I mean, is that sort of the issue that you're concerned about it preventing storage of retail materials, basically? Do you have any issue with something that prevents that? What's the term that Kyle used, incubator um scenario?
In in my previous employee, um, I went into a lot of self-storages that did turn into like incubators. And those places typically had electricity in the base. And people were doing bodywork and all sorts of crazy stuff in there. Um, and that's not what I'm interested in doing at all. No. My units have no electricity supplied to them, so it would be really hard for that ever to turn into that incubator. The front building um is more a retail space. Um, and and specifically the glass shop at the end. You know, if that morphs into something different, is it going to be restricted from being a retail or a wholesale? So to restrict retail and wholesale wholesale on the property holistically um is kind of hurtful to the value of me trying to lease it, you know, or to sell it in the future. Um, and it's, again, it's not consistent with this, with other businesses in the zone. I agree. I don't want the tenants, you know, I don't
Just the front building.
You know, I don't want this turn turning into a little Oriental, you know, bizarre, although I would like to have that in town. It would be great. Um, I'm not looking for it to be a shanty town.
So let me ask you this, and maybe you can help me um, understand exactly what the current setup is over there. Can you just tell me? Because you're referring to sort of, you know, the storage units in the front building and think in the glass shop, and I just want to make sure that I have a, in my head, the full um picture of what is over there and what exists and in what the terms you're referring to are, um, you know, mean.
So our front building that faces Hudson Drive that you and you see mostly when you drive down there is a fifty by a hundred and ten. It's a red iron steel girder building. Um, it truly could accommodate a second floor in there. Um, and it could be turned into or used as um one or two incubator places or the glass shop is fifty by fifty at the south end of that building. And that certainly could be turned into something different, consistent with other uses already in the zone. Right now, the, the way my permit, my contract with the town says I can't do anything but autoglass. That's it, even though lots of other businesses can work in that zone, not on my property. Um, and retail, wholesale, you know, or any other businesses just prohibited in my property.
And that's for that whole front building. I remember is that there's two signs. There's like an autoglass sign and a
Correct.
Storage sign, right? But that that applies to the entirety of the front building?
Well, the entire, yeah, the entire, I mean, the the entire property is restricted from retail and wholesale sales, the entire, everything.
No, I just want to make sure when you're talk, what you're talking about right now, the sort of um fifty by a hundred and ten building, that's the entirety of that building that we can see right here.
Correct. And you can also see behind that the three self-storage buildings, which, which are just, you know, ten basically a rector set type buildings. The front building, like I said, is a red iron steel girder building, um, would take a tornado hit and still be there, kind of building.
And what is that being used for currently?
The left side of the building, um, A and R autoglass, that left side is the autoglass shop.
Yep.
Center is the self-storage office and the right side are two rental bays. And those are used for storage currently. And we do, we rent thirty uh over thirty-five hundred square feet to other businesses in town. And something that was said to me way back when is like, you know, oh, we wish there was more employment on the property. But I don't know how many employees would exist in thirty-five hundred square foot building. Um, but right now, we lease thirty-five hundred square feet that other businesses use. Um, the whole right side of our building is cardboard boxes that another businesses use, you know, instead of keeping it in their building. They're keeping them over here, so they have other machines and employees in their building now and all their cardboard boxes are in my building. Um, so we do have a lot of employment, just not direct. Um, that's important, but if I wanted to put another retail shop in the front building there, I would not be able to. Um, or if I wanted to do something different in my office or something different in the autoglass base, I cannot.
And the front building, I assume, has full electric and everything else, right? I mean, that's because you're using it as a, as an office and um, does that even the right-hand side that's storage base, is that have electric and and heat and everything?
The storage bays do not have comfort facilities, but they do have electric, uh, minimal electricity. I think there's twenty amps. Um, and there's lights and they do have, uh, there's overhead heat in that. Yes, like a Modine hot air type furnace.
Okay.
Right. Um, it's not someplace that you could be. Um, you couldn't work there all day because you need a place to go to the bathroom, wash up, that sort of thing. But I'd, um, the heat hasn't ever been used in those units. It's there. It's never been used. Um, because it's just cardboard boxes.
You know, you know, again, I I will speak only for myself, but I don't have an issue. Uh, I I have to look at the bylaw again. Yeah, I think I I'm just going to take you at your word that he 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 used to say, no, you know, retail sales or wholesale sales or whatever you put in there and and now it doesn't. Um, I have to look exactly and have it fresh in my head as to what it does say, but as a general matter, you know, like you have the autoglass on that one side, I don't have a real issue with you having something on the other side, even if if it involves some kind of retail eh, with the caveat that you need to have the proper facilities and parking spots to handle it, right? Um, but at the same time, I don't see any real appetite, at least on my part, to sort of grant a general preemptive permit to do something, right? I mean, if you came in and said, you know, I I I have this business, um, you know, I'd like to put it there if you wanted to get a permit for use for retail sales for one section. You know, or or some phrase that we come up with that has some degree of you know, boundaries to it. I don't have a problem with that necessarily. Um, I just, I don't, you know, the idea that you can just use it for whatever you want is not really how it works with these special permits. There has to be some, you know, boundaries of use um to what it is. But the idea is not problematic in my mind. I don't, I don't really care if there's, you know, some other type, I mean, you look at the autoglass place, right? I mean, if there was another type of place on the other side of that building, I don't really care.
Um, by removing that section, it, I'm not looking for you folks to add, Andy can have retail and wholesale. I'm just looking for it to be removed so so that I would still have to come to you folks to ask permission. I wouldn't have to come to the entire town to ask for permit modification. Right now, I'd have to come to the entire town, republize it in the papers, do everything we've done here for permit modification. And that's what a lot of this stuff is, is I'm just, I don't want to have to come back for permit modification every time I do something that's allowed in the zone.
But it's not allowed in the zone. But it's the thing, I mean, I, you know, I
Let me use a different word there, Mike. Let me say, let me say, for things that are acceptable in the zone, I'd still have to come back to the board and ask. I just wouldn't have to go through the entire modification process.
Then, you know, I get the annoyance of that. Um, and I don't mind trying to come up with a use to grant to you in some way that has a little bit of broadness and gives you some flexibility. I I don't mind that, but you know, every other place on Hudson has to come in. I mean, I'm just trying to think over the last five, six years, what has come in. I mean, we've had um, I, the one that sticks in my mind is that there's someone trying to make a uh build a chocolate factory um, at one of those facilities who had to come in for, you know, would have had to come in for a special permit. There was um, a bunch of different uses that have come in and every single time they want to change the use in one of those buildings, they have to come in for modification of the special permit. It's just the nature It's just the nature of the of the of the structure of the bylaws. Again, I don't, you know, whether. If it's pretty innocuous, you know, if it's just retail sales of X and then it's moving to retail sales of Y. And they're all, you know, pretty straightforward products that are being sold out of that one area. It's not going to change the traffic or anything like that. You know, that doesn't bother me that much that we could accommodate that, but. You know, most of the time you're you look at it and you and you do a modification because. You know, with different uses, things change. You get more customers. You may need more employees. You may need different facilities. You may need. You know, all kinds of different things that happen with the different uses. So. There's only so far we can go with that.
I just wanted to say, it almost feels like Mr. Erdin. Is you were given the impression that the restriction within your own special permit was. This is it. This is all the town will ever allow. And I think Mr. Doherty is trying to convey is that now twenty years later with the board as it is currently made up. We would not hold you to that sort of level of restrictivity. If you were to come in and request a modification to allow for a different business. Or a modification to your front building to allow for a new business. We're not. Going to hold you to it. Has to be AR autoglass forever and ever. That's it. So Mr. Doherty is correct in saying that, you know, you would still have to come in for a special permit. Because in the IR zone, every use requires, other than the book binding.
True.
And and I would like to add in that I I've been in your facility. Patty is very helpful with UPS shipping, so. I I love your service and your building and business being here in town. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Patty's listening and she has she has the extra envelope for you the next time you stop by.
She she always has the right questions and she knows we all make the wrong error when we return things from Amazon. So she is a joy and a blessing to the town. So thank you.
The other thing too, Andy, is that, you know, I I want you to keep in mind that. You know, with these change in uses. I mean, it obviously depends on the use change that's being requested, but as a general matter, if it's not. A a substantially different use. Your biggest hurdle is just going to be paying the application fee, right? I mean, you can be using the same exact. You're not changing anything exteriorly. You're not changing anything about the site. You literally just need to put in an application that says, I'm not doing anything. Here's the change in use. You know, it's not going to impact. You know, the parking, the, you know, services needed, blah, 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 and be done with it. I mean, that's really all that needs to happen. Yes, you do have to, it has to be advertised. You have to wait a couple of weeks to get that done, but. Otherwise, it's a pretty straightforward process when you're not making a substantial change, especially without making any exterior changes.
Yeah, and I hear what you said and and I agree, but to Jessica's point, that would work out wonderfully with this board. If the board of twenty years ago. Was reelected, would it be so easy for me then? And this this, like this type of restriction, and there's a couple of them in there, you know, the rock face front and the slats and the fence and all that. You know, y'all are willing to discuss that now. But in eight years, is the board going to be willing to discuss it then? Because Jessica may or may not be here. And and that's what this permit is going to hurt me then. The way it's written now, but it it and it taking it off my permit isn't going to allow me anything. But what it is going to do, it's going to not restrict me from coming in and having a discussion about what the town does allow without this little impedance.
And that's a and that's a fair, that's a fair point, right? I mean, I think that's fair. I I'm more taking the next step forward of. Of what can go there and at least giving you our sense of, you know, my sense at least, and Jessica's giving her sense about what. What we're thinking of for your facility. But I think taking out something that. In large degree is going to just be governed by the bylaws in that process is probably fine. All right.
Mr. Doherty, could we close out this discussion for this evening? And there was a major change made in the bylaw, chapter one eighty five eighteen, A twelve. And I think that's an important thing for the planning board members to look at. But I think we should continue this to another evening if if we could.
Well, I was just about to wrap it up. I thought there was one other thing I wanted to bring up, but we can wrap it up for the evening. What's the issue, Marcus, with the change? Because I don't have that off the top.
It allows, it allows business uses in the industrial zone. So it still requires a special permit, but it does allow business uses. So that's the only thing that needs to be studied and. And I just think we've we've talked about this quite a bit this evening. And I'm willing to look at a little more. I'll send an email to you and John Goddard as to my. References to the bylaw, but I think we're ready to move on to other things this evening.
Yep. No, that's fair. Well, actually, well, the only other thing I just wanted to bring up on this list here was I wanted to make sure that no one wanted to have a discussion or. Offer any opinions about the outdoor storage. Because that one struck me as something that I thought people may have opinions on, but before I close it out for tonight. Everybody. Said what they needed to say or didn't say what they needed to say. All right. What do we have on Meg for the next? Meeting?
Can you guys hear me? Okay, I lost my video.
Yep, I can hear you.
So we have two hearings and on the February first meeting, one at seven ten. The stormwater management permit first three seventy North Loomis. And then we have one forty one Congamon Road, which is Krabby Joe's at seven twenty. That's a special permit amendment and site plan approval. So we had a couple of things on here. We have, and John can chime in with this too. We I I don't have the information. I just know there's a sign permit review, but these are not advertised. We have an informal discussion on a student bike rack. And then we, I anticipate we'll have the wireless communications bylaw continued. So.
Andy, I'm going to put you on for seven forty five. The Krabby Joe's one is going to take a little bit of time. Given what I've heard, so. I'll put you on for seven forty five on the first. Do I hear a motion?
Marcus Phelps, so moved.
A roll call vote. Michael Doherty, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
Dave Spina, I.
Jessica Thor, and I.
Okay, so we'll pick this back up on the first at seven forty five. Thank you very much.
All your time. And, you know, Rob Levek nailed it when he kind of paid you guys some accolades towards the end of his last. Encounter here in Southwood, that you guys are a sharp board. And, you know, I've dealt with the planning board for the better part of twenty years. And it's definitely more comfortable dealing with you folks, even just from being able to discuss things. So I appreciate your time and efforts.
Appreciate that. Have a good night, Andy. All right. We have. Hold on. Seven fifty Wireless Communications Service District bylaw revision, continued public hearing. Just give me one minute. All right, so we have a. Well, I can bring this, I should probably bring this up and share screen. I think the only re- real thing unless other, unless folks have things to discuss additionally tonight. Bring up is. We have moved forward with retaining. Isotope LLC to do the study that. They have proposed, including the drive test and to act as a consultant on this bylaw review. This is the proposed contract. And. John, you didn't see anything of great significance in here when you went through it. Correct.
That's correct. Spicy to say, this is Mr. Maxon's meat and potatoes, but I think he touches upon all the key points we need to review mapping bylaw. Both for, we call it, we'll use the term opportunities in the bylaw as well as suggested revisions. And then if you will, the drive test to where we'll work with Mr. Maxon to determine a route. Based on our knowledge of, we'll call it holes in coverage and and trying to identify where. I guess suggested locations would be.
Okay, the only thing when I read through it, besides there being a typo right here, I think that should be the. Is maybe just put in some specific language in the bylaw revision section right here. Same thing with the typo about the map. Just just be specific about the potential for map revisions and and just have that in there at least. But that's the only thing I think I saw. When I looked through it, the rest seems to be. Rather boilerplate language and we've already dealt with. The source of funding for it. So that is all set, I think, right, John?
That is all set.
Okay. All right, so I'll just run through this so everybody can see. Assignment amendments, yeah, pretty boilerplate language. Here, okay. All right.
Who who is the person signing it for the town?
It would, I assume, be Michelle Hill, but I could be, well, no, actually, let's see.
I believe it should be the select board. We are taking that approach, I believe, with the. Agreement with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission for the master plan.
That's correct. Carl gave me guidance. We're going to have the select board sign and then Laura Fletcher. As the town accountant will certify as to availability of funds.
Yep. Yeah, true. To enter into the contract, you need the select board and then, yeah, you need that, right? Okay. All right, anybody have any questions or comments on this? All right, so we'll move forward with. This and anything else on the wireless communications district bylaw review? All right, so why don't we just? Why don't we just continue that on to the next meeting, just to. Just keep track of where things stand. We'll put it on for, say, eight o'clock at the next meeting. We can just touch that, touch base on that before the end of the meeting. Do I hear a motion to continue? The Wireless Communications Service District bylaw review to eight o'clock on February first.
Marcus Phelps, so moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
Richard Ottinger, I. Dave Spina, I.
Jessica Thor, and I.
Okay. That is all set. So routine business, we've already done the decision. The, let's see. Draft major development by law informal discussion. So. Hold on one second. Because. Give me one second. Yeah, so. What I'm going to do is. Diane sent me some revisions on Friday, which with everything going on. With me, I just didn't get a chance to send those around and that's on, that's on me. So. I was just running around all weekend, so I'll send those around to all the board members so you can take a look at what Diane's proposals are. There's also been circulated, I believe, some information she gave at the last meeting for everybody to review. I'm certainly happy to. Talk about this if anybody wants to talk about specifics of it tonight. But I think it's probably worth reviewing those things before we have a more detailed discussion. And I think, you know, I I know Dave Sutton's been pretty vocal in 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 talking about it, so, you know. It's certainly something that having the discussion when he's here is probably a more productive. Endeavor than than otherwise. So anybody have anything they want to offer on this, whether from the board or certainly, you know, I can turn to you after Diane as well. If there's anything you wanted to add in. Anybody on the board? Okay, Diane, was there anything you wanted to add in tonight or talk about tonight? Okay. All right. So we'll just carry that over to the next meeting, but everybody will have a chance and we'll try to. You know, we're getting closer to the point where we're going to have to do something about it. So, you know, we'll try to have a reasonably fruitful discussion over the next two meetings in February. To try to move that to some place where we either do something about it or or or, you know. Decide that we're not going to, as a board. Do something about it and let Diane do what, you know, she she feels is necessary going forward, so. But I think the next two meetings, we really got to start to move it, move it forward. All right, so we'll continue that on to the next meeting. Next on the routine business is the informal discussion of access to the Gregoire property, map one forty two, partial sixteen off of Lincoln Road. Sir, anybody here for that?
Yes, Attorney Ray Zenther and Mr. Gregoire are both here.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I will. Attorney Zenther, I'll, whether it's you or whether it's Mr. Gregoire, I'll let you take the floor and. Put forth what you want to discuss.
Oh, would you like to go ahead?
Well, essentially, we have property on Lincoln Road. And we need to go in there to harvest some timber and want to use the road, bring it out. But right now. The road has a gate on it. Which we believe doesn't belong there. We've proven that the road has been in existence way back to eighteen seventy, as far as we can tell. And we've proven that the road has been in existence way back to eighteen seventy, as far as we can tell on Southwest Town Maps. But it has been usurped by certain people, it is now in the conservation area. So we just wanna be clear that we have access to Lincoln Road all the way to our property, which goes almost to the Connecticut line on the western edge.
Okay, let me, let me interject, Paul.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I, when, when this came up, we all were under the impression that this road had been discontinued. And I approached the DPW about trying to get an easement perhaps from the town so that Mr. Gregoire could get the access to his property from Lincoln Road. And then we started to do some research on, on Lincoln Road. And Mr. Gregoire did a freedom of information request to the town clerk to find out when it was that the vote was taken to discontinue that portion of Lincoln Road that would be westerly of where the gate is now set up. And what came back from the town was the vote, which was, do you remember when that was, Paul, was it nineteen forty-nine?
Correct.
Yeah, and the vote was unanimously against the discontinuance of that road. And I wrote that to Randy Brown and told him what we had found, and that's when we decided that we would forward that information to your board and the conservation. And then, you know, this is just the starting point as to, you know, what, if anything, the town can do at this point to get that gate out of there and reopen that so that Mr. Gregoire and others can use that portion of the road.
So I'll leave this to whoever, but what, so who, who's maintaining or, or who erected or who's maintaining the gate that's there?
I think Mr. Gregoire can address that.
As far as I know, it is a town gate, I'm not sure who is responsible for it. But it's a relatively new gate, there was an old gate that was taken down, and it was put up by Mr. Sofinowski back in, I don't know when. But it's been replaced, I'm presuming, perhaps the DPW, but I don't know. Maybe, maybe Mr. Brown, if he's on here, could answer that question. I see his name down there, but I guess he's not there.
Yeah, so that, I mean, there is, your property, I'm just looking at the GIS, your property butts land owned by the Conservation Commission, is that a large tract owned by the Conservation Commission?
Well, if it is, definitely the Conservation Commission's property. I think what we're trying to say is we believe it's just, it's the road going down there, so it doesn't belong to Conservation or anyone else except the town.
No, and I'm just trying to get a, a, a lay of the land, so to speak, I guess, in my head, which is that Lincoln comes in and where the terminus of it to the left is Conservation Commission owned land, and to the right is your property.
That would be correct, yeah.
Okay, and the gate is, is sort of at toward the end of that road?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I missed.
That's okay, so the gate is toward the end of that road?
And the gate is two tenths of a mile up from Mortvining.
Okay.
But the road goes another seven or eight hundred feet towards the Connecticut line.
Okay. Alright. Yeah, so we can certainly look into, you know, I mean, we, we can't first of all, I'm not sure whether it is properly in front of our board or not. That's my first question in my head.
I had that question also, Mr. Brown was the one that suggested that, and I figured this is a good place to start.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a good, you know, we can certainly marshal the resources to try to figure out the answer, right? Whether it's something that ends up coming to us in some kind of application, I kinda doubt that, but we can certainly, you know, move it in the right direction. You know, so I think what we'll do is we'll try to figure out with DPW, you know, the, the, the sort of ownership or genesis of that gate. And once we have some answers, we can probably better define where it needs to go from there.
Sounds good.
Okay. Alright, so we'll, you know, we'll, I'm, I'm, this John, I'm assuming John Goddard has your contact information. I mean, Ray, you're just an attorney down in town, so I'm sure they have yours, they're easy to get. So, you know, we'll be in touch when we have more information and we'll go from there.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Hi, your, your absence at the Y is conspicuous.
Don't be at the Y when I'm in Florida.
Thank you, have a good night.
Alright, thank you, good night.
Alright. Master Plan Advisory Committee update, Marcus.
Okay, just briefly, John Goddard, Jessica Parker and myself, along with Kari Roland, had a Zoom call on the twelfth of January with some members of the Pioneer Valley Planning Staff to go over their draft scope of work. And we did do that, and the staff person over there, Ken Comina, Comia, has revised it in preparation for our meeting coming up this Thursday on the twentieth. The Master Plan Advisory Committee meeting jointly with the planning board is being held at seven PM. It'll be a hybrid meeting, and the agenda should have been posted today. So that's pretty much where we are there. The revised scope of work costs totals to forty-five thousand dollars. So we'll see how it works out on Thursday, we should be able to mark it up hopefully and move it forward. I'm hoping we'll have a contract with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission by the end of February, early March, because it'll have to go, of course, to the select board for them to approve and sign off on it.
Alright. Anything else?
I had asked Dave Spina to, when he goes to the Community Preservation Committee meeting, I believe tomorrow evening.
It is tomorrow evening, yep.
Yeah, to just give a, if he could, a brief word to that committee about how we're moving forward with the housing plan as part of the whole activity we're doing with the master plan also. Just to keep them in the loop since we are using Community Preservation Act money.
Yep, and I will be doing that.
Okay. Next, short-term rental subcommittee update, Dick.
I think Megan and John are working together, I believe, our first meeting, Zoom meeting, I think, on the twenty-fifth of this month. And that's where we're gonna get started there and see where we go from there, see who, who attends and what the interest is and where our goals are.
Sounds fantastic. Alright. Revisions to planning-related application forms.
Hey, that's me.
I think so.
Hi guys, hi everybody. What's, we're in a cross late last week, and we recognize if I don't put things to an appointment, they fall off the list pretty quick. Our stormwater waiver request form and stormwater checklist, they still refer to one eighty-five thirty-six point one. So between that, and I'm gonna call it a technical walkthrough of the checklist, we've got a couple of revisions. Not sure how the board, if the board has even gone through any form changes in the past, but I wanted to bring it up here. To see what level of review the board may want to have in this process, if any.
I, I honestly can't remember the specifics of how we've done it in the past. I think we have. I don't remember any degree of formality to it, maybe we did a vote. If Doug Bogan feels like jumping in, he is free to do so, but I, you know, it probably makes at least common sense to me to sort of if you give us the new form as you propose it, we can vote on it and then go from there. You know, I, it makes sense in my head that what you're saying is we just gotta make these, as the bylaws have been updated, we gotta make the appropriate changes to the forms, but, so I think just at the next meeting, throwing it on there as a routine discussion item and you know, having us vote on it is probably the way to go.
You got it, thanks, everybody.
Alright, September seventh meeting minutes. Circulated changes, I think, at least from someone came back. Everybody had the opportunity to look at them and make whatever changes they need.
Someone. I sent some over to Mr. Goddard this afternoon.
Yeah, and I think he made those changes. Alright, do I hear a motion to accept the September seventh, twenty twenty-one meeting minutes?
Marcus Phelps, so moved.
Do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
Dave Spina, I.
Jessica Thor, and I.
Alright. John will circulate the December ones before the next meeting, and we'll try to get caught up. You know, at the next meeting. Or close to caught up. So certainly better than we were early fall. So alright, do I, I will leave it open to whoever wants to
I do it, it's my birthday, can I do it?
Well, since you and Dave Sutton are now sort of of the same mind, I think it's appropriate for you to make the, you know, Dave Sutton motion.
I would like to make a motion to close the meeting.
If I hear a second.
Dave Spina, a second.
All those in favor say aye. Alright.